I represent not only Third Baptist Church, but also represent Bridge Builders, and we're grateful for you being here and the candidates being here as well to take time with us tonight. A few housekeeping rules. First of all, if you need to go to the restroom, out this door to your right. Once you go through that door on your right, the women's is on your left, the men's is on your right. In the event that an emergency happens and we have to leave this space right here, we can exit that side door over there or the back door, and we'll meet in the parking lot. This is an old railroad training amen, so just in case something happens, we want to make sure everybody's all together if we need to get out of here for some unforeseen reason. Tonight, the candidates have been given questions already. Some of the questions. I have a few questions that have been submitted by parents that they want to ask you all as well. So prayerfully, hopefully, we can get through as many questions as we can tonight in about a ninety-minute block of time. By eight o'clock, we'd like to be on our way out the door, a little after eight if we can, so we can honor everyone's time tonight. So prayerfully, hopefully, we can do that. You each will have three minutes to answer a question. At the closing, you will have one minute to give your final appeal as to why these wonderful people should cast their votes for you on November the fifth, to the glory of God. I am a pastor. We are in the church, and so the first thing we do when we come in church is we pray. So let us pray. Father, we thank you tonight for giving us the space and the opportunity to gather. We ask you now, Lord, to relieve us from the hustle and bustle of today and give us space to breathe, but more importantly, space to hear. We ask you now for your guidance and your wisdom and your leadership as these candidates share their perspectives as it relates to our children. Help us now and bless us now. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. All right, we're going to start by having the candidates give us your name, and give us the name of the book you are currently reading. Don't say the Bible. Okay. We'll start on this end. Give us your name and the book you're currently reading.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Natalie Kidd.
The current book you're reading, yeah?
Currently, what I'm reading. I'm actually currently reading up on the Code of Virginia, taking, staying up to date on all of the current laws that are currently enacted as I am a candidate for school board. So freshening up on that, that's what I'm currently reading.
My name is Reginald Woodhouse. One of the books that I'm currently reading is John Maxwell's How to Be an Effective Leader.
Hello, my name is Anne Stephens Cherry, and one of the books I'm currently reading is Plain Speaking. It is an autobiography, actually, of former President Harry Truman.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Stephanie Jackson-Afonge, and the book that I am currently reading is called The Book of Mindfulness.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tina Banks Gray, and I am working with an actual work team in my department. We all are collaboratively reading Who Moved My Cheese?
Who Moved My Cheese? Now, there's two mics, so you kick that one right there. Okay, starting on the far end, what is your vision for education in the city of Hampton? Each one of you will have three minutes to answer the question.
Thank you, Pastor. That is a really great question for the city of Hampton, and I know you're probably going to hear a lot of the same answers. But as an actual board, we want to continue quality education for all students. Our model is for all students, every day, whatever it takes. We want to continue to foster all-inclusive and innovative programs and learning environments for all of our students to make sure that they're going to be ready for life, college, and to become career-ready. And you'll find this model, it's all of this is going to be entrenched in all of our goals, superintendent goals, and in our master plan. It's like a little spin wheel you'll see, and you'll see where it has ensuring student learning. That's the center of everything, maximizing student learning, and that's how we're going to make sure that we have that true vision. Also, you're going to find this in the academies of Hampton. We were one of the first in the Virginians to have the academies of Hampton, and we're proud to have our first year of the Master Plan 2.0, and that's K through eight. It has signature experiences similar to the academies, but it's for the lower level. You'll be blown away because these young folks are actually performing capstones after their actual performance and their public, their actual project-based learning. So it's very impressive to see some of the interesting and innovative education models, and that's, it all goes around that maximizing student learning for our vision. Thank you.
Good evening. My vision for Hampton City School students is that all students are thriving. Teaching and learning, in fact, remains the top priority for me because I believe that should be the top priority for a school board. So teaching and learning, that students are achieving at and above grade level and above standards, our state standards. And so the other, my other thought about this is that young people should be thriving socially and emotionally. And so I feel like holistically, the child should be addressed. Not only teaching and learning, but their social-emotional skills should be addressed, and all of our students will be career and life-ready when they leave school. Specifically, focused on students who have disabilities, that their experience in our educational system is comparable, is the same, is equitable, same as those who do not. And so when they leave school, they also will have a plan for the future. And our academies of Hampton have afforded us the opportunity to provide a real plan for our young people as they exit in graduation so that they can have a career plan, a life plan. And so I'm really connected to all students thriving socially, educationally, but I'm specifically focused on our young people with those disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're running as a team, as you begin to hear answers, you're going to hear some of the same, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of that. I will say that when it comes to the vision for education in Hampton, in the city of Hampton, quite honestly, part of our vision has already been realized. And that's because when Dr. Woodhouse and I ran in 2016, not one high school in Hampton was accredited. We were only forty-seven percent accredited, and the fact that we now enjoy a 100% rating and have for years, and the fact that our numbers are better than the state of Virginia's, I would say a part of the vision has already been realized. Now, that does not mean we are not going to, that we're going to rest on our laws. We always understand no school division is perfect, no church is perfect, no community is perfect. So there's always room for improvement. So when I look at some of the things I would like to see personally, is one of the things I just had a conversation with the superintendent about, and that's pushing foreign language down to really younger students. I don't think that we have to wait until the students in middle school to start experiencing languages like Spanish or even Japanese or French. I think our students will rise to the occasion. They've already proven to us that they can through their accreditation. So I would like to push those special programs that speak to foreign language to that K through three model. Because when you think about it, that's where the real learning takes place. If you don't have the foundation, K through three, it makes it more difficult for you to move forward. So what better way to do that than to start them early? Thank you.
Well, my vision for the school system is to pretty much maintain what we are already doing. As a school board member, my vision is to encourage the goal-setting for the district's public educational initiatives, including academic standards, the vision for the school's direction. And as a school board member, my vision is to continue to hold the school accountable for the students' performance results and teacher motivation and encouragement. And that is part of the responsibilities of the school's board in general. Also, we are already doing a lot of this, as has already been said, but I will encourage, and I'll continue to say this part, that the school division implement responsive classroom techniques that build relationships and initiatives for our students to engage and focus their attention on learning and the activities and restoration of learning practices. It's always important for us to continue to keep our students pointed in that direction. Thank you.
My vision for the education in the city of Hampton includes giving every student the opportunity to learn how to be college, career, and life-ready. The foundation of education in the United States and in every school system is to produce productive, self-efficient citizens. Not only should we strive to do that, but to give all of our students the opportunity to thrive and be lifelong learners. We need to continue building on our partnerships with local businesses and community leaders to provide students with those authentic, real-world experiences that the academies of Hampton have begun doing. Additionally, education has to be dynamic and creative to meet the needs of all students and have every student have the opportunity to have an equitable education.
Okay. Thank you for your responses, everyone. Next question, what we'd like to hear from you on is, what changes do you feel are needed to foster a healthier parent-administration relationship? And we'll start with Ms. Stephanie. Parent-administration relationship, what changes do you feel are needed to foster a healthier relationship between parent and administration?
Well, I think that's a very important question, and it actually happens to be a priority of my personal platform, along with a priority for the division and the school board. I believe parents are the experts on their children, and so parent voice must be heard. Transparency and collaboration is critical to student success. I myself had a son who was in special education for about nine years in Hampton Public Schools, and so I know how important it is for parents to be completely involved, very involved, in their child's education. So I believe we have to ensure there's open channels of communication at all times between the division and our parents. Recently, the division started some coffee and collaboration meetups in the community for our parents, and I believe those have been successful. And some of the things that made them successful was that they offered transportation and childcare. And I believe from all of the work I've done with parents over the years, which is about twenty-seven years' worth of work with parents specifically, those are some of the barriers that prevent them from being completely involved in after-school activities and school activities in general. And so those are things that we can continue to do to encourage all parents to remain involved. I think parents should be encouraged to participate on boards, committees. And so with CAC, which is our Special Education Advisory Council, we would like more parent participation, and we will be encouraging more parent participation there. But I believe that, you know, the, our, our school and division and this board, our values should reflect those of the parents that we represent, the children that we represent in our division. And so I would definitely continue to encourage at all costs, parent collaboration. It is critical to success.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, thank you. I think the key is one word, communication. When I was in Hampton City Schools as the Director of PR and Marketing, one of my responsibilities actually was to hold workshops on customer service. Because at that time, I don't think a lot of administrators understood that anybody who comes in your building is a customer, whether that's a parent, a student, or the guy from FedEx. So when I held those customer service workshops, they had to be detailed to different work departments. For instance, the customer service workshops we held for bus drivers was completely different from the ones we held for principals. It was completely different from the one we held for teachers. And one of the things that we taught in those customer service workshops was, for instance, when somebody complains, what do they want? Number one, and probably the biggest, they just want to be listened to. That's it. So we had to make sure that people understood that. We also made sure that in those customer service workshops, that it's important, if you tell somebody something, then you should follow through on it. And if you don't know something, then you admit that you don't know it and say, "I'll get back to you." And if you say, "I'll get back to you," in a day, then you need to get back to them in twenty-four hours, even if it's with a response, "I still don't know." So I think communication is the key piece that we can bind together for our administrators and our parents to make that connection. So I've also talked to Dr. John Cagiano, who's our Deputy Superintendent, about starting those workshops yet again, because I think we've gotten kind of lax on it. We just make the assumption that whoever comes in the building, we know how to handle them. That's not always the case, because you don't know what that parent is coming in for. And I'll end with this. One of the scariest things for a parent to do is walk into a school building. I remember even as a parent, when I had my child at Bethel High School, if the principal calls and said, "May I need to see you tomorrow," I was nervous until I saw him. So we need to bring back a little bit of that respect for the administrators, as well as communicating well on both sides.
As a former school teacher, I would say that one of the things that we need to focus on is to make sure that we approach parents, or when they come to approach us, that we address them with the utmost respect. We are the educators. We are the educated person, people. We should have the, we should be tactful enough to know how to talk with parents and let them feel comfortable and make them feel like that they are important. Another thing that I feel like that we can do is to listen to parents' concerns and take them seriously. Also, encourage parents to regularly attend the activities of the school, be that PTA or whatever other activities that the school is putting on. They need to encourage the parents to attend those things by sending letters to their homes and even, if necessary, to even make phone calls. The teachers can make phone calls to parents and invite them formally. I think that the school system can also work towards fostering relationships between teacher and, and parent, and also teachers, I mean, parents and administrators. So between parents, teacher, the community, and the school staff, I think it's very important that we work towards doing those kinds of implementations.
I would start off by saying I completely agree with Ms. Cherry's point of making sure when our parents are walking into our buildings, that not only we're making sure they're being heard and feeling listened, and then, then there's follow-up, follow-up through questions or concerns that were conveyed to the administration. In addition to that, I was a student with disabilities in Hampton City Schools, and I know it can be frustrating on not only a student's side, but definitely a parent's side, of going back and forth with an administrator via email and still not feeling that our voice is heard. I feel like some additional action items to take that step further is to implement monthly meetings with administration and parents. This could be after school or during the school day. Having your voice heard in person is different than having it heard not only via email or over the phone. So I think a good starting point, just for example, having assistant principals and principals available to address general concerns, safety concerns, the ability to have like a continuing, open dialogue with parents. And there's multiple ways you can do this. You can do one large meeting, or you can have each administrator take its separate topic and hold discussion in separate rooms, like workshop style. And I think also taking advantage of games and shows and working in the room and talking with parents to make sure our parents are not only being heard, but we're taking action to their concerns as well.
Along the lines of communication... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, pass it on down. Yeah, I took the other one. Because it was feedback between the two.
It was, it was too close. The mics were just too close. So we heard some great, some information, and I'm not going to be redundant and repeat everything, but one key thing that we're really proud of with this board and our superintendent and our divisional leadership team, we're very intentional about this movement. We even had this during COVID, and it's called the Communities Priority Workshop. We typically host this every year. This is an annual event where we have it at FIBUS. This event gives parents, it gives administrators, it gives the divisional leadership team, community partners, a time to engage with one another. So everyone's voices are heard, especially parents. Parents just feel sometimes that they are overshadowed. They don't have an opportunity to communicate with community partners that are in our academies, the actual teachers or the administrators. So this is a wonderful way. We typically deal with everything that's related to that maximizing student learning model at HCS that we always promote. So this is something that, like I said, even during COVID, we had a Zoom meeting, and we had like hundreds of folks. I thought we were going to crash because there were so many people online at that time. But we still wanted to hear from our community at large, and you can best believe, we had students there, we had parents there. Parents and guardians were able to voice their concerns and be able to talk one-on-one with administrators. And just FYI, in Hampton City Schools, all of our administrators, board, we respond to every one of our concerns, if they are given email or if it's one-on-one, face-to-face with our parents. That's one of our top priorities, is that we want to make sure that we hear from our parents and our guardians.
Okay, and in line with the communication thing, one of you all can answer. One of you, probably who's on the board now, can answer this question. It came from a parent. And the question was, in light of the recent school shooting threats that took place and the lack of communication parents felt they were getting from the schools, how can that be improved to let parents know of these immediate threats that are going on?
I'll take it. Yeah. When you talk about the lack of communication from the schools, I'm assuming you're talking about wherever they were having shootings, because we haven't had any. So...
It's not this, it's not this actual shooting.
Yes.
It was the threats going around about the schools being...
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, okay.
The parents were notified later on after the fact.
Yes. Okay, those were, you know, one, one of the things we have going for us in Hampton City Schools is that we have a very strong relationship with Hampton Police Department. And whenever something's going on in the community, quite honestly, they're the first to hear about it. So what we do is, we take a lot of our marching orders from the Hampton Police Department because they know things that we haven't bubbled up into school yet. So one of the things we knew was that there was this false narrative going around, not just in Hampton, not just in Virginia, not just in Southern United States. It was all over. And because of things like social media, which some people just aren't a fan of, it spread like wildfire. So in order to make sure that we didn't put out misinformation and that we didn't put out disinformation, which are two different things, as you know, we waited until we had from the Hampton Police the exact message that we should be sending to our parents, because the last thing you want to do, and you've seen this on TV, somebody will be so quick to put some information out, and then ten minutes later, they have to retract it or they have to change it. So one of the things we want to do in terms of communication is make sure, A, we keep the main thing the main thing, and that we're not putting out information that's going to get people excited for no reason at all.
If anybody can chime in, if you want to chime in on this one.
I'll say this also, that we have some situ, and you're going to hear us say this over and over again, but we have some processes in place where if the information, it's a, it's a chain, and it's a, it's a reaction, it's a certain way that we react to those kinds of reports. Now, the safety and resource officers have a particular protocol that they're supposed to follow to make sure that whatever report that is given is accurate and it is, it is, it is true before they put it out, like Ms. Cherry had just said. So you don't want to put false information out and then have everybody run it and rap it, and then have to come back and say that that was not true. And so there is, and so there's a relationship between the school system and the police department that when we, that when anything is reported, then the police department gets it immediately. Or if the police department hears something that should, that's going to happen to the school, they report it to us immediately. And excuse me for stamina and everything. I need to drink some water.
I'm sorry, Natalie. Go ahead. No, go ahead. I was just going to piggyback.
Well, I completely agree that we definitely don't want to be putting out misinformation to our HCS families, to our community. I still think it's really important that we have increased crisis communication through our division. It's a critical need for our school division and honestly, school divisions across the country. Our students are scared, our parents are scared, our educators and staff members are scared to go into the school building when there are these threats circulating around social media. I mean, our students are usually the first ones to see it, and they're the ones terrified to enter the school building because they don't know what's going to happen to them. So as important as it is to wait for the correct information, I completely support that. We have to wait for the correct communication, because we do not want to spread misinformation around to our community. I think we need to have more detailed and updated information going out as soon as we see a threat posed on social media. I mean, just as a former student that recently graduated, I did not experience as many school threats in my day of a whole six years ago when I graduated from Hampton City Schools that our students, educators, and all of our staff members in the building are facing today. So I think it's completely and wholeheartedly important that we are increasing our crisis communication within our division.
I just wanted to end on something, if I could, Pastor. When we talk about threats, do you all remember, and I'm going to go way back, do you remember when there was the shootings going on in DC and people were being shot and nobody knew where they were coming from? I was afraid to walk across the bridge at Hampton University because if I saw a white van, I was running. And that was taking place in DC, okay? So you see how, as has been stated, you can get real nervous about things that have absolutely nothing to do with you. Now, I'm going to just end on one note, and it's, and I just want to speak to this because it speaks to misinformation. When I was PR Director for Hampton City Schools, we had an elementary teacher who was teaching a class that just read a book and had dealt with piglets, so you know the one I'm talking about. And there was a farmer from Elizabeth City, North Carolina, who she had got to come to her class and bring the little piglets so that it could further enhance the story. So I was PR Director, so I went to my photographer, and I said, "Well, I want to make sure we have this on the website, so I need you to go to XYZ Elementary School, go to this teacher's class, and I need you to, you know, shoot the teacher with the piglets, shoot the children with the piglets, and then shoot the whole class." So he said, "Okay." So I told my secretary at the time, who was a substitute, I said, "Make sure they know Tracy is coming," and I told her what he's coming to do. So the secretary ended up calling the school, and the school secretary answered, and she said, "Hello, this is Pat Satchel from Hampton City Schools. Tracy is on the way to the school. He's going to shoot the piglets, he's going to shoot the farmers, and he's going to shoot the teachers." Now, when he got to that school, all HPD was there. That's a true story. So that speaks to the misinformation that can come out.
Just really quick, and mine is not as funny as Anne Stephens Cherry. I hate to follow Anne Stephens Cherry with her stories, my goodness. But I just want to reassure everyone that our current board has made security and safety concerns top priority in our division. That means that we have a nurturing environment for all of our students. We also have a comprehensive measurement plans that we actually have on our table that we want everybody to take a look at. It's a great list of all of the actual policies and procedures that we have implemented as a board as it relates to safety concerns. Just for instance, a lot of people don't understand, there is a difference between an actual, a metal detector and a weapons detection system. The actual weapons detection system can pick up metals and different types of metals that a metal detector cannot. So they're a little bit more innovative, and they're not as intrusive and scary as your typical metal detectors. So we have really done a great job of making sure that we have these innovative measures in place and systems and resources in place as it relates to safety measures in Hampton City Schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next question is, how does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? How do you balance that, that whole juggling act? To provide quality education, but yet still responding to the taxpayer burden?
Okay, I'll say it this way. All students have the right and privilege to a, to a, to a high-quality education, and that will help them to reach their full potential. And therefore, taxpayers, funding has a major impact on the... And therefore taxpayers, funding has a major impact on the student's success. And forgive me for reading, but you only give us two minutes, right? Three minutes. Oh, okay, I can take my time. So evaluating the, the funding formula of the school system that we use and using practical steps that can provide and the budgeting process helps average taxpayers to evaluate their investment into the school system through a medium in which students benefit and taxpayers are less burdened. Research shows that comparing adequate and positive student achievements and average income helps to clearly demonstrate the necessity, funding for schools in a measurable and positive way.
Okay, I'll just say that school divisions honestly are the economic engine that drives a city. And one of the things, we're fortunate enough in Hampton City Schools and in the city of Hampton, you won't find this a lot of places. You can do the research, you can Google, you won't find a city council that funds its school division above what it is supposed to. The formula calls for X number in terms of a percentage of dollars to come to Hampton City Schools. In other words, if we ask for $10, they give us 15. That's because they know the quality product we're putting out. So when we have that relationship with our city council, and keep in mind, because we are all have been on this board for either four years or eight years, it's not like we have to call and say, Mr. Mayor. We say, Donnie. And when Donnie calls us, he says Stephanie. So we've got the one-on-one relationships and if you know anything in life, it depends on relationships. And I believe in my heart of hearts, because I was there for 17 years and that was not always the case, that this city council is so convinced that this school board is doing the right thing, that's why when it comes to things like funding formula, we couldn't ask for a better situation in terms of funding for Hampton City Schools than what our council gives us right now.
Okay, as it relates to this question, the first thing that resonates is that our current, current board has a transparent budget process that Ann just spoke to. Our board maintains open communication with our general public about our budget priorities and how funds are allocated, ensuring all taxpayers in Hampton that they understand how their monies are being spent with this local education system. The board, we also aim to enhance educational outcomes while being mindful and transparent for financial implications for our community. And that's something that we've always, I know Ann and Dr. Woodhouse actually ran on transparency, and that's something that we, we're really proud and we toot our horns at. A lot of folks and you see a lot of divisions, they do not have a transparent budget process. But that's something that you'll see in Hampton City Schools and you can guarantee on a yearly basis.
Natalie, would you like to add something to this question? Oh, Stephanie, you?
All right, we're right down here, okay. I believe that every government, agency and organization should be good stewards of taxpayers' money. I believe everyone here would probably agree with me as well. However, I, our schools are severely underfunded to meet the needs of our students today. And that's just not an issue in Hampton City Schools, that's an issue across Virginia, worldwide, not worldwide, across the nation, excuse me. Beyond the funding needed to help our students and thrive, there are additional costs associated with mental health and violence in our schools. This is when we need city leaders to help us in this area and growing our tax base through smart city planning will help us alleviate the tax burden, burden in general on our citizens.
I'll just piggyback on what everyone has said and I agree. Tax dollars support schools, so tax dollars go to support our schools. So when, if we increase our funding for schools, sometimes that does raise taxpayer dollars. But I think we have to leverage that with the return on that investment. So you have higher graduation rates, you have improved job prospects, you have young people who can come out of school and get jobs, which reduces crime rates, which reduces the amount of social service support that's needed for our citizens, which also drives folk to come and live in our city because the school division is so great that we'll get more folk that come here to reside here, which ultimately leverages that as well. So I think that, you know, citizens can understand the need to invest in, in high-quality education for, in its community. And if, and if that means raising taxpayer dollars, that return would be greater than what the raise would be.
Can I just add this? That our school system is at 100% accreditation. Now that says a whole lot to businesses that want to come into an area where schools are doing well. They look at what, what kind of product the school is producing. That brings businesses into the, into the community, that brings tax dollars into the community, which relieves the taxpayers from having to pay so much, so, and so many taxes because businesses are now paying the taxes and it keeps the, the average citizen's taxes lower. If you cannot encourage businesses to come into your city, then there is no other resource for the city council to do but to raise your taxes. So if your school is at 100% accreditation and it's drawing in military individuals to come into your area, businesses to come into your area, then that relieves taxpayers from having to pay high taxes. And so it is important that you have a program in place where the school system maintains that 100% accreditation to continue to attract those businesses, military funds, and even citizens to come in to pay their taxes as, as well as buying homes and getting rental property. Anybody else?
Natalie, did you want to? Did you? Okay. I'll start with you for the next question Natalie. As a potential school board member, where would you look to make budget cuts?
Absolutely. I believe that cuts do not need to happen at the school level. They're already doing the heavy lifting. Streamlining out some of our central office staff would be the first look as far as staffing. Looking for ways to streamline our expenses, thinking really outside the box, eliminating redundancies, really looking at how we're spending our funds and looking for those grants to fund as many needs as we possibly can.
You can go next round, what else?
You want me to answer that? Okay.
And then give it to Tina, since she's patiently waiting after you.
Well, then let, let me give it to Tina, then she's excited, and then I can come back.
Okay.
Excuse me, goodness, we're not on the mic, I'm glad you're not recording this. Hold on a second.
Yeah, we are.
Are you? Hold on one second. I got one more, I got one more coming, it's coming. Hold on. Okay, so I'm good now. So are y'all recording for real? Y'all cut that part. Are you recording and y'all, y'all cut that part? So we have not made, as it relates to budget cuts, we have not made budget cuts in years. And as a person of faith, I refuse to speak that into existence. So we've been responsible as a school board with our board fiduciary responsibilities and we will continue to do so. And I am not going to say we will cut anything because we have not done that in a long, long, long time, and I will not speak that into existence. So that's what I had to say and that's what that little sneeze wanted to say as well.
Thank you. As I said, I had been the, Pumpkin, you want it? Okay. As, as I had been the PR Director for Hampton City Schools for 17 years, and I can tell you, we did some budget cuts in those 17 years and it was horrible. Budget cuts will always come back to bite you. And it doesn't matter, for instance, you can't cut the bus drivers, who's going to take the children to school? You can't cut the cafeteria workers, who's going to feed them? So they started looking at teachers. And then our numbers really went down. Now, you don't just get to be 100% by cutting your budget. Since I've been on the board and Dr. Woodhouse has been on the board and these fine people have been on the board and the current board we have, we are not cutting budget-minded because there's some ways that you can be effective in terms of how you manage, just like your household. If you want to make sure that all of a sudden you're going to put new carpet in your house, it doesn't mean you cut your budget and decide you're not going to pay Virginia Power anymore. It doesn't work that way. You have to manage your budget so that everything is important. For instance, somebody once said to me, and I believe it in my heart of hearts, you can tell what's important to somebody by where they put their money. And that's where we are in Hampton City Schools. You can tell what's important to us because we put our money in instruction. If you look at that pie chart, it takes up the biggest, I mean by far, piece of instruction. So when we talk about budget cuts, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think I can. I'm not a fan, we have not had those discussions, and I don't see in the near future with this bu, with this board, us having it.
Okay, everything that I was going to say has already been said. Before we came on the board, the, there was a situation prior to Ms. Ann Cherry and I coming on the board where some teachers were laid off because of the lack of funds to give teachers raise or even pay teachers. So they had to find some way to cut the budget. They've cut the budget by cutting teacher salaries. Since I've been on the board and since Ms. Ann Cherry has been on the board and Ms. Banks Gray and Ms. Fong, Ms. Fongja, there has not been a need for budget cuts because we have a unique way of how we present our needs to the city council. And the city council sees the importance of funding this school system and this, rather than some other cities that we have partners and neighbors who don't have a good relationship with the city council. We have an excellent relationship with our city council. When we make our presentation to them about, of our budget, they are always overwhelmed with how specific we point out things to them, where the needs are, and they, and they fund those needs because they see how important it is and they always compliment our school system on the way that we present the school budget to them.
In, in light of the current city councils, you have this new city council coming in, how will, how, how do you navigate that new relationship? You have council members, seats coming up and a new mayor coming in, so there may be one or two people on that council, who knows, who may have not have been a part of the previous council. So, so banking on that relationship you had before and the potential for a new relationship that has to be established, in the event, in the event that some idea that some may say, well, budgets need to be cut somewhere, in the event, I'm not saying it is, I'm not saying that they won't be all on board with how things have been, and I'm going to let you answer the question right as I get it out. No, Stephanie, because I know you have a question, you want to answer the previous question.
You know, that's always possible and that's something to be prepared for. Certainly, we don't foresee that, but there's a possibility and we're, we'll be ready for if, if that's the case. I think the way that we will continue to present budget priorities as a board to our council, whoever the council is, that we would continue to present it in such a way where cuts were not reasonable for, for us or for our city. We, we cause, you know, there's administrative costs, there's extracurricular programs, there's supplies and materials, there's staffing reductions, there's transportation costs. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could look at if we had to look at cuts. But again, this board has, is, works together so that we, whatever we present to the council would be, would be honored and supported. I think the other thing is that we as a board have ensured that we have a large amount of contingency funds. And so when we were getting money back in, during COVID, a lot of the money that we were getting from the state, we did not have to use for some of the things that other divisions had to use it for, i.e. Chromebooks and getting kids onto social, onto those platforms to be educated because we had already done those things. Our students already had Chromebooks, they already understood at least a modicum of Google Suites and how to access that. And so we were able to reserve a, a large amount of those funds. And we have done that and placed them into a contingency fund that will allow us to, if a cut was necessary, it would allow us to supplement what that cut would look like. And, and our former superintendent and our current superintendent and our finance and budget folk at the division have, have maintained that this remains a priority. Contingency funds remain a priority because you never know, just like you said Pastor, what might happen, what could happen, there could be another catastrophe, there could be another outbreak, there could be whatever, and we wouldn't know what impact, financial impact that that would have on our division. But those contingency funds, and we've had several million dollars of contingency funds in, in our budget right now. And so we feel very confident that that would take us through any, any unplanned or unforeseen circumstance like that.
And I'd just like to add from a mathematical standpoint, which is interesting because all of my colleagues know I don't do math. You talked about the seats being up, there are three seats up. We have seven members of council, all seven members of council are 100% behind Hampton City Schools, three seats up still leaves four, four trumps three, so we would, I cannot imagine us having a situation where we would have a council voting to cut funds in Hampton City Schools. Consider the fact also, you mentioned we're going to have a new mayor, Jimmy Gray is Vice Mayor, and he speaks more about the wonderful things this school division is doing than we do actually when he's in. We've gone to a couple of forums and I can tell you, even the people who are running for council speak highly of the Hampton School Board, even the people who are running for council. Some of them I think are using it as their platform, quite honestly, and that's okay. But I, I don't, I don't foresee that because we have built a strong and solid relationship and it's just like a great team. When you've got a winning team, I don't care who that new person is coming in, that mindset is to win, to win as well.
Let me share this also, and, oh, I'm sorry. We also have a buddy-buddy system with the city council where each one of us is paired off with one of the city council members. We have an opportunity to go to lunch and to talk about the budget, to discuss what's going on in our city, which has really been very profitable for not only the school board, but it's, has also been profitable for the city council. And they have shared with us their concerns, you know, individually, and then we can, we share with them our concerns. So by the time that we get to the presentation of the budget, they are pretty much aware of what our needs are and what we are, and what we are not going to use the money for and what we will use the money for. And they're pretty much satisfied with what we have already presented to them. And then when they do the major representation, it's even more information given to them. And so it, that has worked out very well for us as a school board, as well as for the city council and the budget process.
I was going to speak to what Ms. Cherry said. Every single council member that is running has support of Hampton City Schools on, on their platform. So that's really important into building collaborative relationships as, as a school board and city council with new members arriving on the school board, new members rising on to city council as well. I wanted to go back and address, I wanted to make sure I was answering the question of where would you look to make budget cuts? Because I'm sure we've all seen a lot of televised debates recently where a lot of candidates are just circling around the question, so I wanted to be very transparent with y'all with, excuse me, with you all, with our voters and where I would look first to make budget cuts. I also want to clarify where I would never start to make budget cuts. I would never advocate to cut teacher educator pay and support staff. I won't advocate to cut costs associated to instruction both in and outside of the classrooms and that goes along with academies of Hampton. And also I would never advocate to cut, for the supports for our students with disabilities and our underserved students as well.
So I'm just going to piggyback on really quickly on the, if, say for instance, if we had to have a budget cut and just highlight an actual council meeting that occurred a couple of, a month ago. So our city manager, Mary Bunting, she was actually highlighting and giving accolades to the Hampton City School Board and our collaboration with the city council. And she went into grave details about how And she went into grave details about how Hampton City Schools budget process was one of the main key reasons of us winning the All America City Award, um, that we won here recently. And it's something that most, most cities just can't say that we have this awesome partnership with the city where not only city, they don't highlight their accolades, but they're talking about Hampton City Schools was one of the key reasons why we won All America Cities in that budget process. So that was something that, um, I know that this current, um, current council, in addition to all of the forums, I was going to say we had 5,662 forums already and all of them had said that, but I forgot I was in the church, Pastor, so I took it back. So I'm just going to say we've had a gamut of forums. Um, but all of them have all said that they have 100% support of, um, the priorities and the budget process of Hampton City Schools. That's something to be, um, excited about at this time.
Okay, good. Uh, this next question is from a parent with a special needs child. They start out by saying, there are many days my child is without a substitute. And the question is for parents with special needs children, what should, what should be the protocols for special needs teachers, teachers assistants, and student personal aides? If she gets in the classroom and there is no teacher or teacher's aide or anybody in the classroom, what are the processes or protocols to ensure that students with special needs have somebody in the classroom at all times?
Well, while, while I'm certainly partial to students with special needs, all students should have someone in the classroom at all times. And so certainly, um, building administration would need to be, uh, uh, aware and address that immediately. Um, I have children in Hampton, I have a child now in Hampton City Schools and I have two children that have recently graduated from Hampton City Schools. And, uh, if they were in a situation where a substitute didn't show up or the teacher didn't show up and substitute, then someone from administration would normally come into that class and be there until a substitute could arrive or so they could secure a substitute, i.e. the vice principal, or they would pull an aide from another class. I've been in my daughter's school and someone didn't come and they came and got the aide out of her class and said, "You need to go into this class until, um, a substitute arrives." And so certainly that wouldn't be acceptable on any level that any child, special needs or not, would be in a classroom unmanned and attended by an adult. Um, now, again, sometimes because we do have, everybody knows there are teacher shortages, someone has to come in that is not the teacher designated for that day, for that classroom. But somebody needs to be there or should be there until a teacher is secured. And from my understanding that, you know, the building administration would ensure that that's the case. Um, so that was something that needs to be brought to the administration immediately if that is happening. No child should be in a class unattended by an adult.
If there's no teacher, then the administrator should be physically present until they can corral someone.
Yes, sir. An administrator from the, from the school or another individual will be, should be pulled from another class and put in that class until, um, an instructional person can, can be, can arrive.
Oh, thank you. I think this parent may be referring to a one-on-one staff, um, member that is with the student at all times. It's very, um, depending on student's needs and their severity of needs, allows students to have one-on-one support staff members. So maybe that's what the parent is addressing specifically. I'm not sure. Uh, but that's why I just wanted to like clarify. I didn't want to go out of order, sorry.
If, if I understand your question correctly, as a former teacher, the protocol that you will follow as far as I've been instructed, the first person who should be contacted would be the assistant principal. Then if the principal, the administration, superintendent, and then the school board. So if you go to the assistant principal, the assistant principal should handle that situation and have somebody in that classroom or the principal. Because that's, that's in the immediate school. Now that, that was what I was taught when I was, I don't know if they've changed it, but that's what I was taught when I was in the Newport News Public School System.
You know, and again, I'm not sure what that situation is. But, um, I remember when I was PR director, because I had a background in language arts and in English, I actually, as PR director, had to go to one of our high schools to an AP English class to teach because somebody did not show up. So I know they pulled from outside.
And I think everyone is covered, um, that it's just not acceptable, whatever the case is at this point. But if you could do us a favor, because this has come to our attention as the vice chair of the school board and the rest of the school members here, if you could refer us to that parent so we can get to the bottom of this. If you can meet us at the back of our table, sir, we would greatly, um, like to discuss more in detail about, um, what actually happened and we, so we can get some resolve. Thank you.
I apologize. I did not know that y'all were in attendance in the audience. I thought this was an email question. Um, but I would love also, not as a current school member, to hear about your situation as well. I think it's really important that you speak to all candidates on this issue so that going forward, we can make, make sure this concern of yours is properly addressed.
Okay. Moving right along. Um, the next question has been submitted by another parent. The question is, parents should be a part of the decision-making processes for their children. How best can that be done? And how can that information be, best be shared with all parents?
Well, it would depend on the situation we're talking about, but I can give you an example. Basically, when we make policies, major policies in Hampton City Schools, it's not top-down. It's from parents up. I'll give you a perfect example. We used to have, um, uniform dress code. Because when we did a survey and talked to parents, that's what you guys said you wanted. I want dress, I want uniform dress code. Then parents said, a few years later, it's not working. So we had another committee meeting. You maybe even remember that. And they said, "We don't like it." So we got rid of it. So we do find ourselves getting information from parents because they're the ones who send their most precious products to us, okay? So we have to listen to that voice. But that's just one example of how we listen to parents in terms of where we go forward with policies and procedures for Hampton City Schools.
I think what's also important is our parent portals. Um, as a parent of a child in Hampton City Schools, I get a great deal of information through the parent portal. It's very interactive, it's up to date. Um, the parent communications that come to our cell phones if such a threat or, um, any kind of immediate communication is necessary, we get, um, emails or texts straight to our cell phones about what is happening at that, at that time. So I think that's very important. Um, parental, parental engagement, as I mentioned earlier, is a top priority, not only for myself, but for this board because it's critical, critical to the success of our students. Uh, we know that our students do much better when their parents are involved and when they are engaged in the educational process. So it's very critical. Um, and I think any way to enhance communication between the division and our parents, we're on board with that. We've taken a lot of measures to do that already, um, and we'll continue to do so.
And one thing also that you have to know about this board, we don't arbitrarily, um, make decisions or policies as they relate. We're data-driven. So a lot of our decisions as it relates to, um, hearing that parent's voice, it comes from either surveys or engaging with our parents on a regular basis. So this board, we just don't arbitrarily just make decisions and, and, uh, make it for the best interest of the board. We make it for our parents that we've heard from their voice. And it's based on that data that's given us that direction.
Um, next question. With mental health a major issue affecting our children, what steps do you feel are needed to ensh- enhance the learning ability of our children?
Um, well, I'll talk a little bit about that as a mental health professional. Um, HCS has done a lot to secure the s- the physical safety of our children. You've heard about some of those efforts. Um, and so I think the next step is ensuring that, um, our students' mental health needs are addressed holistically. And one such practice that we've recently started in Hampton City Schools is that we've hired restorative justice counselors. And they have been placed in some of our schools with, with a higher level of need for that. And in that, in that space, those counselors really work collaboratively, um, with, with those children in the school building, um, around their needs to resolve conflict, to improve their social emotional space, um, to work with the community, um, and just to be there as a resource for young people who need that type of a resource. And so restorative justice is a fairly new approach that Hampton City Schools has been taking, but that we've already found a good amount of success with because it just provides for a more inclusive and collaborative community for our young people. It creates a safe space for our young people, those counselors do, for them to come and really discuss and, um, address issues before they escalate into a safety issue. And so, uh, mental health being addressed. Also, I think another big key to addressing mental health, um, to enhance learning is partnership. And Hampton City Schools has a robust partnership with the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board. We know that, um, they're, and I worked for the CSB for over 16 and a half years. And so I know the quality of support that can come out of that agency, the quality of connection and linkage that can come out of that agency. A lot of, we have schools from CSB, um, counselors from CSB that are placed throughout our division, um, to work directly with our students whose mental health needs rise to a level that, um, maybe the counselor in our school may not be equipped with. I'll say lastly, I met recently with the Hampton City School Social Work Department. All of them are licensed or licensed eligible counselors. That's something unique to Hampton City Schools. In other school divisions, counselors are not licensed eligible. So that means that they have clinical background. Their black background is not just in social services, but it is a clinical background. That means that these folk are under supervision for a clinical license. And so they are prepared, well-prepared, to address many of the mental health needs that arise with our students, such as the mental health fair, that mental wellness fair that they have every year. And it's coming up on October 28th, uh, which is a big, huge thing at the convention center. We have hundreds of parents that attend this. And they get lots of information, linkage and resource about how to improve and address their students' mental health. And that's put on by the social work department. So, uh, we have a lot of great things going and we can always do more, which we will certainly do.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So one thing that our current board and division, um, one thing that we are is we're proactive, we are not reactive. We've collected, I've always talk about data as it relates to this division and this board. We've collected data, um, from our students and their perspectives on, um, social, emotional learning as it relates to mental health and wellness, right? Um, we've collected this data and in response to that, we've actually have three different areas that we're focusing in on. One is the Hampton City Schools tiered approach. Now, this is an academic and non-academic approach, right? So there are three different levels. That first level, that is the core level. This is meeting a, a person, a child where they are. That second level, that's that targeted area for non-in academic needs. That third level, that's where babies may need intense help far as mental health support, um, additional tutoring aspects, things of that nature. And then like Stephanie said, one thing that is new to our district is the restorative practice coordinators that we've implemented throughout of our, all of our, um, our different schools. Another thing that is very unique to this district, um, that this board has actually, um, put into place, it is called CARESOLIS. Now CARESOLIS is in a unique, um, 1-800 number that not only staff, students and their families can utilize. Say for instance, at any, any given time, if you're having suicidal thoughts, if you're having bouts of depression, if you're having, um, any type of mental, um, any type of breakdowns at that given time, you can be connected. Call this particular 1-800 number and you're connected with a mental health professional, professional to walk you through those, um, typical, those, those issues that you're having at that time. And so this is something that Hampton City Schools, that is at one of that, remember that center I was telling you about of maximizing, um, and, and ensuring the maximum learning for our students. Mental health is something that is truly bubbled up and we're taking it seriously. And we have some supports and resources that are very innovative in our division that you won't see across the board.
You have 50 seconds. No.
Me? Oh, okay. All right. No, I probably, I probably only need 10 seconds because they've all said, um, exactly the things that I was going to point out because I said, you know, we're on the board, so we all know the same information. But I will say that when you have, um, licensed eligible counselors and you've got CSB counselors, that's key. That really is key for a school division. When we talked about our mental wellness fair, when we started that, actually the school of social work started that, we said, "If we get, I don't know, a couple hundred people, we'll be fine," you know? That, because it's the first one out of the gate. We ended up with 1,300 people that first time. The next one is going to be, I think it's next Monday?
Third one.
The thir- third one, next Monday. So that'd be next Monday. That's the next one. And that was held at the convention center. And I tell you, the partners that came together to help our school of social work and our parents and our students and our administrators and our teachers and our community were phenomenal. As I've probably mentioned before, I don't know if I mentioned it here, Hampton City Schools has over 340 business partners. And according to the Virginia, um, School Board Association, VSBA, if a division our size has 120, that's considered excellent. We have 340. So we use our partners to further the work that we're doing as well.
I would just like to add that, um, my son is a special education instructor. In fact, he is a, uh, special education coordinator. And my brother is a special education teacher. And my brother works in another school system. So in comparing what Hampton is doing compared to where my brother is working, my s- my brother has complimented Hampton on what we are doing. My son says that the program that we have, the tier program, has helped to implement, um, and equip the teachers to identify out of, out of the ordinary behavior problems with students. And he, he also said, not only that, but the teachers can identify students who deal with discomfort, uncertainty, risk-taking, and social skills. So I believe that we are on top of the, uh, mental health, uh, concerns. Now, there's a lot that can be done and it's still, you know, but the school is evolving. And so that means that we're steadily doing, um, innovative work, investigating what we can do better with, uh, special education and mental health. Mental health is the buzzword now and everybody is concerned about mental health.
I agree, mental health is definitely a buzzword, not just in education, but across our nation, mental health is a growing concern and within our communities. As someone who graduated about six years ago, I know I said that earlier and I think it's obvious at this point, I apologize. Um, I think, um, I provide a different perspective of the effects that social media has on mental health. Most young children nowadays have access to social media platforms and they can be very damaging to their self-esteem, their ability to grow, their ability to learn. I think it's really important that we have someone in a voting capacity helping making these decisions for our students. I think speaking directly to our students is how we start addressing our mental health concerns. Um, some children don't have, aren't heard in the home and don't have an outlet to talk about their mental health concerns. And then sometimes we have some parents that aren't sure what their child needs and how to start with their mental health concerns. So we need to decrease the counselor-to-student ratios for our students so that they can make, we can make sure that their voices are heard. Um, I wanted to address the last question as well, I apologize, um, about parent involvement and making decisions for our students. I believe it's important and essential that we are research and data-driven. That's how we produce positive results in our school division. But I also feel like we need to increase communication and regularly articulating why we are making decisions that we sometimes receive maybe a little bit of backlash from, for our parents so that we're open with our community and that we are making the best decisions for their students and why we're making those decisions.
I thought you were passing the mic down, okay. Um, next question. We are at 7:48, so hopefully we can get two more questions in, um, before we close. Um, what do you see as the major issue facing school district, city of Hampton? What is the major issue that's facing the school district?
I think right now, the major issue facing Hampton City Schools, quite honestly, is maintaining where we are. When you, and we've cited the, the, the data, um, when, when your school division's numbers in terms of graduation rate are are better than the state of Virginia's, it's hard to stay there. When your dropout rate is lower than the state of Virginia's, it's hard to stay there. When you have a dual enrollment program, where as we did this past May, have fifty-six students walk across a stage with an associate's degree before they even have the high school diploma, it's hard to stay there. So even though with the Ace Academy, which is at Fevers High School, which allows for that example that I just gave, it reminds me of something I've said, I've said it before, so forgive me if you've heard it. I know that we can always look for ways to improve, because nothing is perfect. But it reminds me, and that's why I say I'm sorry if you've heard me say this, it reminds me of the Kansas City Chiefs and Patrick Mahomes. When they first went to the Super Bowl, their record was eleven and six. They lost six games. But they won the Super Bowl. And when Patrick Mahomes was asked about it, he said, no, we didn't have a perfect season, but we were perfect when it counted. And that's how we look at Hampton City Schools. We are doing phenomenal things for our students. Every day, our motto is, every child, every day, whatever it takes. That's why when questions are asked about students with disabilities or students who are homeless, which incidentally ninety-seven percent of our homeless students pass the SOLs, or students who may come from one-parent homes, it does not matter. When that statement says, every child, every day, whatever it takes, we mean every child. So my concern would be keeping, as we've said before, the main thing, the main thing, and doing the best for our students and our community.
I think one of my greatest concerns is people who are not informed of what is really going on in the Hampton School System and the accomplishments that has been achieved by the school system from twenty sixteen to the present. Another, another, see, one of the things I found out is that if you're not attending, if you don't know, if you don't attend the school board meetings or watch them on television, you really don't know really what's going on. When I, when I, when I first ran for school board, I was attending the school board meetings, and I watched it on television, so I knew.
I sat right next to you.
Right, so I knew what some of my concerns were and what the school system was doing and what they were not doing. So when I, when I ran for the school board, I ran because I did not want to be famous. I didn't want no salary, I didn't even know that they were even giving money. I ran because there were some things that I knew that needed some improvement on. When I ran, I said, and Ms. Ann Cherry was running, we both were running at the same time, we had a conversation together. We talked about the transparency of the school system, and that we wanted the school system to be transparent. We talked about the accreditation was low at forty-one percent, and we wanted the school system to be at a hundred percent.
And there were openings for the school board.
And we talked about a graduation rate being where it's so low and that our students deserved a better learning atmosphere than what they had. I was an informed individual as a parent and as a community member in my neighborhood. I talked with the people in my neighborhood, find out what some of their concerns were. And so what frightens me and what concerns me is that a lot of our citizens don't know really the achievements or the accomplishments that has happened in the Hampton School System. There are many accomplishments that in the last eight years that has made our school system come from the bottom to the top. We are now considered to be one of the best school systems in the state of Virginia. We have not always had that reputation. We are a model school system now for other school systems, so much so until they come to our schools and come to do tours to find out what we are doing that's right, that's making our school system so effective. The Academies of Hampton has been a very, very effective program. In fact, we started behind Nashville, Tennessee, and yet we have a better program now in the Academies of Hampton than Nashville, that so much so until Nashville is coming to Hampton to see how we are effective in doing the Academies of Hampton and are growing more academies, programs in our school system. For next generation is so impressed with us that they are talking with us about putting in more programs because we have been so successful. So one of the things that worried me the most.
Time's up.
Stop talking.
Time, I wanna hear, I wanna hear from Natalie, because you're the outsider now coming in. And, 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 and they're entrenched, no disrespect. And you guys, you're entrenched. And I wanna hear from, from someone who's coming into this fresh, what do you think, from your view, is a major issue in the school system?
Absolutely. I don't believe I'm coming in completely fresh. I was student representative to the school board in team, I was a senior at Kickitah High School. I was actually chosen by two members sitting with me currently who were on the school board to represent the school division as student representative. So I don't believe I'm completely new. Really, that opportunity that was awarded to me to be student representative gave me the passion that I knew I wanted to run for school board one day. And I wasn't sure when I was going to do that. But I think right now, it is really important, it's essential, that we have younger voices advocating for the needs of our students, our community members, and our educators. Just like Dr. Woodhouse said, I don't wanna be famous. This deciding to run has definitely made me step outside my comfort zone. I have been actively engaged in the community, but not a front-facing person on the news articles. So this is definitely a new experience for me. A big part of my campaign is that I've been door-knocking my entire campaign. I've been going door-to-door, meeting my community where they are and seeing what their needs, what their concerns. So I, when elected, I can address their concerns wholeheartedly and that I'm informed on the issues that need to be addressed. And to address the question as well, some of the major issues facing public education, not just in Hampton City Schools, but across Virginia is, we've addressed it already, the mental health of our students and staff. Unfortunately, vaping and substance abuse, that is something that Hampton City Schools is facing right now. And we need to make sure that we are implementing our safety and security measures into our schools. And I believe an important way to further implement that is hiring more security personnel and then implementing our K nine units as well to, for not only to pick up drug substances, but as well as, I apologize, our weapons detection, in addition to the weapons detection assistance we have at the front doors of our schools. Safety, of course, meeting the needs of our learners, our diverse learners, our learners with disabilities. And of course, lessening the burden of our teachers to be everything to everyone. I am the very proud daughter of a twenty-year HCS teacher, the sister of a speech-language pathologist for the vision, and a niece and a cousin of HCS teachers. It is very important to me that I continue to be an advocate for our educators. One unique thing that, that Virginia schools are facing is the new accreditation standards that are coming out in July twenty twenty-five. I think it's really important that we have someone new with a fresh perspective helping HCS make sure we maintain our hundred percent accreditation status. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add to that question? Okay.
I would just say that, you know, there are a number of issues that are facing public education. I think what's unique about Hampton is that we've taken so many measures to minimize many of those issues, such as equity and access and integrating technology and community and family engagement and political influence on our school. Of course, safety and violence issues, mental health. I mean, these are things that are facing public education in general, all over the world. And so Hampton has been really successful with minimizing a lot of the negative outcomes that divisions and young people are seeing because of these negative impacts. I will say this, teacher shortage is a major issue everywhere. I own a counseling business, I have way more referrals than I have counselors. If I can't meet the people's needs with qualified counselors, then that's a problem. It's the same with us and the division. We have to have qualified teachers in our schools. Teacher shortage is a big issue everywhere. And so, we've begun partnering with universities, and we beginning to look at a pipeline of qualified teachers coming into our division right out of school. And so those types of initiatives, I think we have to continue to do to make sure that we can continue to have qualified teachers. The other thing is having rigorous professional development for those teachers who are coming in, who may not be as qualified as some of our senior teachers. We have to make sure that we continue to professionally develop them so that they can meet the mark as it relates to educating our students, because our students deserve the highest quality education and qualified teachers. And so if I had to name one, I would say, all over the, all over the world, teacher shortage.
And this is the last, unless, Ms. Cherry, you wanna answer?
Ms. Cherry, you can answer.
After this? Okay.
So, I'll wrap it up, I'll button this one up. So in other districts, like we said, we've seen funding disparities. We've seen major teacher shortages, mental health supports, technology integration issues. But in Hampton City Schools, we're truly not plagued with these issues, because we take data-driven system approaches to avoid these issues. So when we have resources and programs in place, when these issues bubble up, we already have them ready to rock and roll for us. And this is reflecting in our actual, our statistics that you see that Ann Stevens Cherry just shared with us, hundred percent accreditation, ninety-eight percent of our homeless population is graduating on time. That's to say something that we have systems in place as it relates to any type of issues that may be facing our educational system.
Now, take, did you wanna share something before we?
No, I started.
Okay, okay. Since you have the mic, Stephanie, the last minute, each one of you have a minute to close up and just give us your heartfelt plea as to, why me?
All right, well, thank you again to Bridge Builders and to Pastor Kenny and Third Baptist for hosting us here tonight, for allowing us this space to share with you all. My name is, again, Stephanie Jackson-Afonge, and I have been a member of the Hampton City Schools Board for the past four years. I have three, I've lived in Hampton all my life, I graduated from Hampton City Schools, went to Hampton City Schools, I have three children, two of which have graduated from Hampton City Schools recently, and one of which is in the first grade. And so I'm really committed to the long-term success of Hampton City Schools. I'm really proud to be a member of a board that has accomplished or has supported the accomplishments like what we found in Hampton City Schools. Yes, there's work to be done. Yes, there's more things that we can do. No, we're not perfect. And no, the division is not perfect. But we certainly have created a team here that has learned how to work through issues, that has learned how to keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's teaching and learning for our young people. And safety, and of course, our teachers' needs. And so I would just like to ask that you would consider voting for myself and our board on November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you, I see there's a timer.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I'm Ann Stevens Cherry, and I am seeking my third term on Hampton City School Board. You already know when Dr. Woodhouse and I ran, what the school board looked like in terms of accreditation. But I can tell you that one of the words that I heard Ms. Afonge use was qualified. And we are not only qualified, we are experienced. When Senator, I mean, U.S. Congressman Bobby Scott endorsed us, he said, I'm endorsing you because quality and qualifications matter. When Senator Mamie Locke endorsed us, she said, I'm doing so because of the experience. I need experience to continue on the board. The same thing with Dr. Jawan Ward, who's our delegate. But the most important endorsement I feel we got was from our Teachers Association, because they're your people. The Hampton Education Association has endorsed this team and wants to keep it together because of all you've heard here at this table today. Now, are we perfect? No, but I can tell you, we're perfect when it counts. So what we want you to do is please consider bringing this board back together and keeping us together. Thank you.
Once again.
One minute?
Yes sir, yes, thank you very much. I am Dr. Tina Banks-Gray, the current Vice Chair of Hampton City School Board, and I am up for my second term reelection. I want to thank Bridge Builders, Pastor Kenny, for allowing us for this great forum, this forum. Most folks get nervous with forums, but I love forums because this is an opportunity for us to share our successes. Quality education is key. Our board is made up of individuals with strong institutional knowledge. We get the job done. I understand, I personally understand the landscape of Hampton City School because I've raised a child from K through high school. Now she is a doctor of physical therapy. So I understand I have the partnerships, all of us have partnerships with Hampton City School prior to coming into this role. Please join us at the back of the table. We have some interesting information we want to share with you as it relates to more of our success stories. Early voting is happening now, actual voting will happen November fifth. We would love to see you all at the polls. Please exercise your right to vote, and thank you so much for this evening.
Give her a minute and a half. I think you gave her a minute and a half.
You did good. Now let's see if the preacher can do it.
Impossible, all right. Why me? Well, I'm Reginald Woodhouse, I'm the pastor of First Baptist Church Jefferson Park. I have a bachelor's in management, two masters, one in theology and one in divinity. I have two doctorates, a doctorate in healthcare administration and a doctorate in ministry. I am an educator. I have, I am such an influence on my family when it comes down to education, that I have a son that's in education, I have a brother that's in education, a sister that's in education, a nephew that's in education, my nephew that's assistant principal, my brother's in special education, my sister is a sixth-grade math teacher, my son is a special education coordinator. I have taught. I know what education is all about. I have taught students to take the SOLs. And I feel that schools, our school system and our school board is evolving. And you have to have some wisdom on the school board. So vote for me, and the four of us, God bless you.
I appreciate everyone's time and attention this evening. Thank you Pastor Kenny and Bridge Builders. I wanna take this minute to address what sets me apart from my opponents. I'm the only K through twelve graduate that has graduated within the twenty-first century, sitting here right now. I'm the only one who has the same shared experience as our students currently in our division. I'm the only one who has taken SOLs and learned on Chromebooks, and I'm the only one that has faced the effects that social media has on mental health. And I'm not new to the Hampton City School Board. I have had connections with Hampton City Schools, and I served as student representative of the Hampton School Board in twenty eighteen. As you heard, my opponents are running as, as four, as a team. They're asking for all four votes based on one platform, and I am one platform, asking only one of your votes. Just a fresh perspective for our students, our educators, and you, the citizens. Thank you very much.
All hearts and minds, she finished with time to spare. Well, first, well, lastly, let's give them a hand. We wanna thank you all for your time and energy tonight and your passion. Your passion shows. It's quite obvious that you're passionate about what you're doing. And prayerfully, hopefully, if all things go well, then all five of you all will be seated in November. But we wanna thank you for your time tonight. We wanna thank you all for your time tonight, sharing with us tonight. And I'm trying to be very diligent and get you out of here by eight-thirty, because you know, most Baptist preachers keep us in here longer than we supposed to be, and we need to be, amen. But let's close in prayer. Father, we thank you for everything we have shared on tonight, and we thank you for, again, giving us this space. We recognize, oh Lord, that behind all that we do, there is a hand that's at work. And we simply ask you now to let us get a glimpse of your hand, and let us follow your leading as we journey in the days to come. Bless these candidates, oh Lord. Allow them to be filled with fresh insight and wisdom and strength and resolve to continue the fight for our children. It's in Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
That's it?
Yes. Yeah, you can have that, put it out there just for you.
I've been looking for it, I've been, somebody took my hand from my office, just like, I'm telling, I'm not lying.
I ain't been to your office, I ain't take that hand.
I lied in the church.
I'm not lying in the church.
I ain't been to your office, I ain't.